The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for coming. We're glad to have some guests here tonight. It's great. Let's get right to our agenda. First of all, we got to have a motion to go into a public hearing to establish a new water district formation pursuant to the town law of the state of New York.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Pat, open second.
I'll second.
And Adrian, all in favor?
Aye.
And Adrian is raise excuse me, okay? So, who would like to speak about that? If there is none, so we have a motion to close the opening.
Motion to close.
Okay, Pat, in second.
I'll second.
Adrian, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, authorizing the town board to adopt the resolution to establish a water district subject to permissive referendum. The motion for that, please.
I'll make the motion.
Pat?
I'll second.
Adrian, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Let's go down to the approval of the amendments for December 20th, amended, and January 17th. On January 31st, all those dates, there you go. Oh my goodness, busy month in January. Okay. So, who are for all the amendments?
All motion.
Okay, Christie?
I'll second.
Adrian, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Authorizing the town board to approve the town supervisor to sign the non-reimbursable agreement between the Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, and the town of Messina.
Motion to accept.
Pat, in the second.
I'll second.
Adrian, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Authorizing the approval from the town board, the town supervisor to sign the pre-application rehabilitate terminal building roof construction for the airport.
Make the motion.
Pat?
I'll second.
Adrian, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Authorizing the town board to approve the hiring of Patrick O'Brien as the part-time code enforcement officer for the town of Messina pending the results, of course, pertaining to the Messina Town drawing an alcohol policy.
Public motion. Happy to know that I was part of the interview process and very impressed.
Good, thank you. In a second?
I'll second.
Christie? And Patrick, you are here. Oh, you have a motion. Everybody agree?
I agree.
Okay. Pat, you are here. We'd like to stand up so we can introduce you. Here's going to be our part-time code enforcement officer located here in the town hall. Would you like to say a few words at all?
Just to keep it real simple. I think probably the first couple of months are going to be a little bit of rebuilding. But I think with code enforcement, code enforcement's not meant to be a punitive process. The whole purpose of it is to resolve life safety issues in the community. So I think that's kind of the approach that we're going to take going forward is trying to work with our community members. And, you know, the last stage of any of this should be enforcement action. So, the whole purpose of code enforcement is to never get to that point and to build relationships and have conversations with stakeholders in the community so it doesn't get to that point. And I think that's the direction we're going in. I think we've got a pretty good setup, so I think we'll probably be in good shape.
And also, we've had a great interview with Mike. He's got good plans for us to do a lot of high-line things that I think will make it much easier accessible. But before you leave, Pat, make sure you meet up with Air Products. You were already here. These two guys, Mike and Lyle, right?
Right. Lyle, I'm Matt. I'm the fire chief too, so I've talked to you guys a bunch.
Okay, because you probably would be in communication, so. All right, very good.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Pat.
Congratulations.
Okay. Authorizing the town board to advertise forbid the construction of the sand storage building at the airport.
Some on the airport. Do you have a big motion?
Okay, and second?
I'll second.
Adrian, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Authorizing the town board along with the county superintendent of highways to the county of St. Lawrence to adopt a resolution allowing the Messina Department of Transportation, under section 1622.1, the vehicle and traffic law to establish a lower maximum speed at which vehicles may proceed on the Pontoon Bridge Road, a town highway between the village line and the old river roads.
I'll make the motion.
Adrian, in a second?
I'll second. This is based on safety issue.
Yes, I'll let you talk about that in a second, Pat. All in favor? Christie, all in favor? Okay. Did you want to address that, Pat?
Just that we've discussed that. Do you guys want to talk about that?
Sure. So, I'm Mike Clemson. I'm the in the.
Mike, go ahead and stand up.
Yeah, so I've been the construction manager on the site prep phase. So if anyone's been out there on Pontoon Bridge, they'll notice, you know, a large area was been cleared there. And going into next year, when we get into peak construction, you might have 300-plus cars coming on that site each day. So, I've seen right now it's a 55 in the passing zone there. And I've also already seen an incident almost happen as we had flaggers here backing the truck in. And what happened there was that a car was riding too close to the one in front of them. They went to pass, not realizing they were headed into a construction zone. So, yeah, I would love to see that speed come down and eventually maybe the passing zone.
Well, we will send the resolution to Air Products and also a copy to City Specs Office, exonerated him last Thursday. They'll be expecting it. And we'll send also a copy to the county highway superintendent who's aware of this, okay? Again, things going through New York State, you never know how faster it will go because it's got to be approved by the Department of Transportation.
Right now, we're, I mean, things are a bit slow, but many years from now, we'll watch for it.
Right. And you have plenty of people working out there as flag people.
Yes. We'll work with, we'll have the team work with the city to make sure that we do anything we can to do that. Anything that you see that you think would be a good suggestion, you know, please come to us with it. At the same time, we'll make sure that we're very visible about what's going on so that, you know, we can.
Yeah, any communication, make sure you get in touch with Dylan. He's our highway superintendent, okay? He'd be the first person to talk to, all right? And then probably Pat O'Brien as well. Okay? All right, good. Thank you. Authorizing the town board to approve the sales quote from ABS to update their phone network for the museum.
I'll second.
Okay, that's Christie. In a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Adrian, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Authorizing the town board to set a public hearing on March 20th, the next town board meeting, for cryptocurrency regulations.
Make the motion.
Okay, Pat, in a second?
I'll second.
All right, Adrian, all in favor?
Aye.
And we've been working pretty well. We want to thank Debbie Willer and Francis Carle. We've been working with Eric the past year and a half on the regulations. And lately, I've joined the cause with Debbie still working with us and Eric so that we should have things in good shape.
Yeah, I just say having something to go out to the board before the end of the week.
Yeah. We've had a lot of good work on that, so it works good. Thank you very much. Authorizing the town board to approve the scheduled preventative maintenance agreement revised with STAR. You want to tell us about STAR? Is it Dylan?
It's just a preventative maintenance program for our generators, all of the town buildings.
Okay. And have motions, please?
Motion.
Pat, in the second?
I'll second.
Adrian, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Authorizing the town board to approve the purchase of office supplies and equipment for the new town code officer.
I'll make the motion.
Pat, in a second?
I'll second.
Christie, in all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Authorizing the supervisor to sign the supplemental consultant agreement with basic services lump sum fee identified, as well as the entered agreement of a lump sum consultant agreement for engineering services, for the undertaking of Messina International Airport airfield electrical improvements this time.
Motion.
Pat, in the second?
I'll second.
Adrian, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Authorizing the supervisor to sign change order number one, which provides a decrease in the contract amount. The federal share was 536,000 some. The New York State Department of Transportation share was 14,000. And for Messina International Airport runway 523 rehabilitation. You all know about that runway?
Motion.
Okay, Pat, in the second?
I'll second.
Christie, in all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Authorizing the supervisor to sign the town water district water supply and maintenance agreement, a cooperative agreement between the village and the town effective from January this year through December 2028.
I just have one question on the agreement.
Yes.
The question is the $6,000 per year for the maintenance of the building and stuff like that. Don't they, don't they charge in the billing already for that?
Do you want to add the?
Yeah. Adrian, that's a good catch. We, Sue and I talked about this yesterday. That charge has to be built into the billing. It goes to the resident of districts. You can't take a resident fee and spread it among, or a fee to residents of the district and spread it to the whole taxpayers. So Sue and I will make sure that that's taken care of.
Yes, yeah.
I think that the language of the agreement itself is standard to what we've had for a long time, but that little court we're going to need to change. So, and maybe the appropriate is, you know, subject to approval of the town attorney into the content of the $6,000 payments.
So amend my motion to use like that.
I guess that was discussed. I mean, they wanted it up front and that will be spread around, but maybe not.
It's got to be certain ones like our.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's a question of what the town hall requires, right? We'll be in, we did flag for that.
Okay. So, can we proceed with that one, Eric, or not?
Yeah. I think, you know, again, as long as the motion is subject to, you know, approval of the law.
Okay, and maybe a note, that? Motion subject to, motion subject to approval by the town attorney?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we got our motions from both. Pat, and who else?
I'll second.
Christie, thank you. Special note here. Good. Okay. Authorize the town board to approve the town supervisor to sign the service agreement with I-Works, which is a software which is used for code enforcement. And I'm told that Pat negotiated a very good deal for that, too. Thank you very much. Motion, please?
Motion.
Okay, Pat, in the second?
I'll second.
Okay. And thank you for all the research from all those vendors that were offering. So we certainly got lots of bits on that. All right.
Aye.
Christie, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold on, Pat. I'm still writing over here. All right, transfers and amendments, please. Who are the two people signing all the vouchers this month?
You are.
Okay, it's up to you two.
Go ahead. I've made about 50 motions.
Well, you still have to be involved, okay?
I know. I'll second if you have to.
Okay, so, is that Christie, a motion first?
Yeah, I motioned it.
Okay. Okay, and then Pat, second?
Yeah.
And the same thing with the warrants, so.
Yeah. Reverse off, so I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, and all in favor both, yes?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. But the entry reports, please, Brenda.
So, as of this year, 2024, February, our total revenue as of today was 3,587,401. In 2023, at this time, was 3,859,750. So our 2024 revenue is 272,349 less than February 23. Our expenses for 2024 as of today are 1,622,870. And in '23, at this time, was 1,360,334. So our 2024 expenses are 261,753 more than February 23.
Yeah, we all heard that, right? Expenses more? That seems to be the way it's going everywhere right now. Okay, so keep that in mind, please. Anything else you wanted to add there, Brenda?
I think there's some more I need to cover.
Right. Okay, we're going to go right to the highway committee, please, for a report. Dylan?
I'm going to start with spring cleanup will be a little different this year than it was the past couple. We're going to go back to the way we did it previously. The last year we did it was 2018. There was some conflict with the neighboring towns and villages at the county transfer station. So we're going back to three days this year. It will be May 16th, 17th, from 8:00 AM to 2:30 PM at the county transfer station. And May 18th will be 8:00 AM to noon.
And what also was different? Are there vouchers this year?
This year, you won't need to do the vouchers. We will have the highway department at the county transfer station to check people in and help them unload garbage.
Okay. And again, what are those dates again?
May 16th, 17th. It will be from 8:00 AM to 2:30 PM.
Yeah.
And May 18th, it will be from 8:00 AM to noon.
So just the three days, Dylan?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. How about the airport, Dylan?
The airport boutiques, their numbers, they were down a little bit through January. We had quite a bit of weather. There was 294 in planes, 300 D plane, for a total of 594. There was 165 landings. There was 21 canceled flights. They plowed 14 times, performed winter makings after each storm. There was a structure fire at the airport field house, which we are continuing to maintain. We will probably be looking into tearing that down due to the fire.
So you're going to be seeking bits then to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
You have plenty of notice sort. You could have done for that.
Okay, well done.
Okay.
Other than that, the library and museum have no one who wishes.
Did you want to talk about boutique or anything else? Jason told me he couldn't hear. I have a report for him, but would you like to speak on?
Currently, this is actually the banner that Don will touch a little more on. It is going to be advertising for the sports shows, as well as, they're working to get some pamphlets and things like that put together. For Jason, we are doing something for the solar eclipse. We're still meeting on that.
That's what I was wondering to tell you though. Okay.
We are still meeting, working on the finalized plans of that. As of right now, I just heard that CNS Engineering is going to donate 100 glasses for us to use during the eclipse, but we don't have any finalized plan yet.
Okay, and but you're planning on having this at the airport?
Yes.
Okay, good to know.
There's actually two sites that so far have discussed.
Yes.
One is at the airport and one is at the library.
Oh, okay. That's good to know. All right, very good. Okay, joint recreation, please.
I met on February 13th. They discussed that they didn't have, obviously, tell by the letter that they didn't have the outdoor rinks this year. They did have one outdoor rink for one week and I was at. He met with NIPA twice, discussed initial funding for the light fairies and for playgrounds and, I guess they call them team leaders or playground leaders. Had a discussion about the rental vehicles that they have there, which is basically more of the village mosque. They're discussing, the department had their recognition of not favor of lease agreements that they had going on. But that, like I said, just want to keep you aware of, because that would probably do a loss.
Yeah. Like stop there some time to explain to me what that's all about. So that if somebody walks in my door, I have an answer.
Right.
If I let Bill walk in, it would really.
They're not in favor of, I don't want to get into it too much, but just not, the department is not in favor of the payment that they're making for the vehicles.
Oh, good. Okay.
They had a mic shootout tournament. It was a 20-team tournament Saturday. Everything went all there. They have a 19 tournament going on. That's going to be next weekend, I believe. Got five 18 teams and four 10 teams. They have the holiday ice sponsorship that went through the holidays for the free hour ice public skating. They're all sponsored by different businesses through town. And, that was it. The next meeting is going to be on, I don't know, on the, now, March 12th.
Okay, good. All right, very good. And town library, please.
Next meeting as well.
Okay.
Library, uh, 13th at 4:15. The president's vote for, they did a, submitted a conflict interest in sexual harassment training form. They voted on a change of the public library for the proposition. They voted to change the public library's name to Henry H. Warner Memorial Library for the proposition instead of Messina Public Library, which is now. Also say that they need to raise 679,990 dollars, separate apart from the other school district appropriations. In such appropriation, you change by further vote the majority of the elected school district.
So in other words, instead of the funding that we normally do, which was 525,000 last year, they're asking for how much?
679,990 dollars more.
In that vote. Okay.
The director and then several, has some activities lined up. She's going to be with the North Country Kids Act in 2024, March 16th, to be held at the Suny Canton Brew House. And all North Country libraries will be there. Michael Flynn will be participating in special story time April 6th. This will be a story of craft and snacks and highlight of police car lights. February 24th, they have a guest speaker, Elaine O'Donoghue. She's SLU professor and Adarax guide creator, observatory board member, and Elaine important to talk about the eclipse. They do plan on having an eclipse viewing at the library. I don't have the exact information on that yet. March 27th, 10 to 12, NCR PR. Todd Moe will be partnering with our library for the children altar event Wednesday, June 10th. And the next meeting is going to be March 12th.
Okay, David, town museum?
Okay, so, they met on Thursday, February 4th, or, I'm sorry, February 1st. And they are still having issues with their website. They can't read the number of hits of visitors who have come to it. So Ray is going to reach out to Jason to see if he can get that rubber running again. They had 27 visitors come to the museum last month. And Mary Ellen is working with the county historians to work on history in the hallways. And they're researching the Danforth House still and the Kenny's family. Let's see. They've got more to do with the pictures that they found. They're still working on getting names and all of those things. They had some donations. They have a really nice 12-piece dinnerware set that was donated to the, to the museum that they're hoping to set up for display. And they have a new inventory program that has been set up for 2024, which should help them to, you know, obviously inventory their, track of their donations and things that they have and they're cleaning out. And there was a question about the possibility of a grant to cover the cost of electrical for the new storage building. And Ray said he was going to reach out to Dylan about what would go on with that. But I haven't heard from my, about it, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
And that's about it.
Okay. And assuming there was money left from the donations for the storage building that could be used for the electrical, is that true? Is any money left for the storage building? They could use that.
Yeah. I'll have to get what you have.
Yeah, because after the grant was paid for most of it, there were several donations made by local people. And if there's money left in there, that could be going toward the electrical. That would be the purpose of it. Okay? If you could follow up, let us know.
Yes, I will. I will. I'll be like, I'm sure.
Okay, good. Okay, town planning, Arizona?
Yep, we met in February 15th. We hadn't met since October. Just one item on the agenda. Outstate tolling and recovery was approved to, under two conditions. There can be no more than 20 cars stored on the site of the operations. And the business cannot have an active repair shop. So those two things are approved by, I'm.
Okay. And what do they need again, then?
They'll let us know. I'm not sure. Maybe, maybe in March, we don't have anything on the proposed agenda.
You want to make sure Pat gets a invitation, since he's code enforcement?
Yeah.
That he can also be attending that. So, let the person in charge know. Is it Vance?
I'll let, I can let Vance know.
Vance or David, though?
I'll let David know.
Please, okay. Okay. Jason's not here. He's at a hockey game, but lots of kids. He's going to play hockey. So anyway, he did get information. It's going to be.
Did you skip the EMD?
Oh, we'll come back to that. Hold on, hold on. August 3rd is when they're going to have the Rock the River. So he told me that this morning when he stopped in. So put that in your calendars. That's always a big event, summer time. And also, this performer that he was telling me about this morning is from Nashville. And he's putting out an album that sounds like he could be pretty good. So again, put down August 3rd on your calendars for that. All right, now, back to Messina Electric, Pat.
Well, this one's, I did a performer with West Grove.
Yeah, West Grove, yeah.
All right. This was first, this was Ray's first month to take the minutes. I can get the actual minutes.
You know, when you attend, you can take minutes, too, you know?
I have my notes in here, but I didn't write them up because I was waiting for Reagan.
You're the teacher and he's telling you to take your notes, okay?
You know, all right. The minutes were approved, the operations update, the safety EMD has not had a safety issue of 571 days. Reportable injuries of 934 days since the last one.
Good.
It's up another 30 days since the last one as of today. They have time to write up. This is for today. This was a one clock meeting and stuff.
Okay.
Customer impact chart. EMD customers, it's very low customer impact, 1,829 minutes recorded. Reliability, EMD crews have responded to nine calls in December. Only one called the whole of the customer impact. So far, it's been a really good winter for EMD, including January and February. Work schedule, crews are getting things done. Continue to take care of the trees that are at issue. Continue to spend that. We've been able to cut down more trees than in fact they're going to be able to keep because of many of those. Write-offs, $5,000, $5,145 were approved in write-offs. They show the power comparison graphs. The power costs were 718,000, less than 200,000, less than 5,000 maximum in 2022. So there's all of these associated ones with billing and everything. Everyone should know that our community really does a good job. And they do good for the community. Our tax, our rates for electricity are very well compared to the rest of the state. So they approved the bills, the community reports. Ray was welcome to just commit personnel. Personnel is doing very well. We haven't had a lot of illness or anything associated with that. It's one of the things that we're forming. Energy efficiency programs, they have specific energy efficiency programs for the community. And air crisis isn't wrong, you fix it. But anyways, they have residential and they have commercial grants out there that people can apply for and be able to get some things to help them become more efficient in using the system to use less power.
Yeah.
Other than that, I guess the board did renew the Messina Police Department answering because they answered the phones for them for the night shift and stuff. So that was reapproved. That contract was agreed upon.
Can you give a chance any copy of that, okay?
Yeah, I'll give you one. We'll have to bring copies for. And Eric, anything else I should tell Dylan about the last meeting?
I think that's, that's about it.
I'll give you that and your copy for the next meeting.
Okay, I'm also going to give you a chamber report. We'll add chamber on to the next agenda. We'll also add code enforcement so that if Pat wants to do a report, I think he can do that as well. So add chamber and code enforcement, okay? As far as the report for the chamber, I've been in contact with the St. Louis County Chamber. Of course, you know the integration with Messina and Augustburg and Kent, et cetera. Both Jennifer Myers and Christine Page are working on a grant for the annual concerts in the park series this summer. I spoke with Ben Dixon, the St. Louis County Chamber Executive Director. He updated me on the continued progress of the chamber. The chamber sends out two emails last per month with lots of events listed. Make sure you check it out. If any member of business or organization wants to list their event, just go to their portal and post on their calendar. There will be a business mixer April 30, 30, I believe it is, on 29, at the Best Western in Canton at 3:30. It's always a big turnout. I went last year with, I think, Debbie and I went last year. Very good turnout for businesses. And that's where I got some people from the Department of Labor, which is very helpful to us. It worked out very well. You can sign up for either their newsletters, one for business and one for tourism. And you can become a member as business or individual just by going to their website. And I spoke again with them this morning. They're, what they're doing is Laura Pearson is working for Augustburg. She's also going to be the one working here, beginning work here in our office in Messina for chamber after March 4th. She's very familiar with Messina and is a business development specialist. He sent me a whole list of things that she's already taken advantage of and worked with in Messina. Some of the things they're talking about, wow. Some of the things they're talking about, wow. She was the coordinator of the SUNY Albany Bridge Program, located at the Aquasazia Boys and Girls Club. Also, M Sina Community Center, um, also worked at the St. Lawrence Center Mall. And uh, she'll be here half the week, not later than March fourth. She's gonna be canvassing the business community with Kathy Moore of Liver Utilities, who's also on that board representing M Sina. And uh, let me see her. Again, she'll be contacting Kathy Moore, Jill Winters from NIPA, and Melissa Thomas and Chrissy Moody Valcoa are all on the board of directors for M Sina, which is great. She's gonna be speaking at the M Sina Rotary Club next Tuesday, so I'll get to meet her and learn more. And then the Monday Lunching Club, the following weeks, so she's getting out. She's also working with Amy Stark at the New Visitor Center, the Ice Power Lot. Uh, and they're talking about promotion, of course, of the Eclipse. Uh, planning a business after hours network event. And providing financial support and collaboration to Fish for M Sina. So these are all good things already, and I was great to hear all this today from them. Okay, next, Don Meiser.
Well, this is, this is probably one of our busiest times because we're doing the sports shows, and I talked to you about the sports shows last month. We, since then, we've gone to the first sports show, which was in Marlboro, Massachusetts. And I've been doing this, I did it for years with, uh, when, when I was ahead of Fish Cap with the St. Lawrence County Chamber. So it's been fifteen years of doing these shows to tell people about our area. I've never, ever experienced in all those years, a show like this was in Marlboro. The crowds, two hours before the show began the first day, there were crowds that were lined up, three or four football leagues waiting to get in. Uh, it, it was, it was indescribable. They had to keep closing the building down, the fire department, because there were just too many people that could be in there. And they'd wait until X number of people would leave, and then a whole nother bundle would come in. Linda will show you, when she comes up to talk about what she's gonna talk about, the, the uh, welcome bag that we give them. But this welcome bag is absolutely extraordinary. We never had anything like this in the past, and maybe that's the reason we had such, uh, such attendance for, for our booth and the, some of the things that people ask. I did want to tell you that I think we were so successful that on the, on the day we were returning, I was getting phone calls from people that came into our booth already starting to plan for their summer trip to M Sina. And today, I was on the phone again before coming here with another guy that has a company that he wants to come up to M Sina to experience with his tackle company, how it's gonna be in these waters. It really was highly successful. One of the, I want you to all understand that everything that we can get to represent what people can experience in this area, we try to do. One of the things we've been trying over the last week is to get something to represent the experience these people can have if they come. For, for example, Marlboro was in Boston, or right outside Boston. They could come here and have a trip just to experience the eclipse. And this is something that they can't get anyplace in New England, and so it's one of the things that we're trying to present in the show. We also, one of the great things that we have here is the, is the airport. And so, over the last couple of weeks, Dylan, we've been working with Dylan and talking with three of the top people in that company about what we can do, number one, to represent them and how that relates to M Sina at these sports shows, but also how they can help us with our summer tournaments from an economic point of view to sponsor what we're doing. Because, again, what we do helps them and vice versa. The other thing that I wanted to tell you is that one of the things that the promoter for one of these other sports shows that we were talking to, her name is, uh, I can't remember her name now, Conan.
What's her name?
Stacy.
Stacy. She had never done a fishing show, she's doing this big show in Suffolk. What she had done for years, her life was craft shows and other type of shows that people go to. She said she has never seen anything like the buzz that comes from fishermen. She says it's different than any of these other shows, and I wanted to tell you this because the buzz is coming from social media and Facebook. And so I think it's important that we realize that, and as we promote things that involve the fishing world, they communicate tremendously through, through Facebook. Uh, the, the, I guess the, the final thing I wanted to tell you is we've also been working, and it's, it's just a, a backup to what we've been talking about, the St. Lawrence County Chamber. I've had three trips there in person, meeting with Tiffany Amo, who I believe is the interim director. And in regards to how the St. Lawrence County Chamber is going to support financially the things that, that these sports shows that M Sina is doing. And that was one of the things when, that there was a merger of all this, that this was one of the prerequisites that was taking place. I've gone over each show with her, she's approved every show, they won't cover our, all our expenses, our booth fee, our travel fee, our lodging. The only thing they won't cover is meals, so that, essentially, they're gonna pay for this. So that's, that's exciting, and so I'll leave the rest, but I just, I will tell you, we'll be for another show tomorrow, we're going to Springfield, Mass. And if the results we had, one final thing, and I, I, I've been talking about this for years now. The greatest interest that I found from families that would come up to our booth, and we got to talk to them more than we've ever had before because of the welcome bags that we had and the things that we were giving them. But one of the things that, that seemed to stand out, their interest was in the Grass River, the Racket River, these tributaries that come in, and in kayaks, because a lot of these people now have got kayaks. And this is something that they don't need a big boat for, they don't need a ton of money to be able to take advantage of the river, like so many of these bass boats are. They can come here and they can spend a week and they can visit our different tributaries and they can catch the same kind of fish. So this is exciting for me because this is one of the things that we really haven't, haven't promoted, like I think stands really alone in this area. We have the best tributary fishing I've ever seen. So I know I went on a lot, but this has been an exciting time, and I think it's gonna build even more as we go on the next couple of months.
Thank you, Don, and good luck at the show.
Thank you.
Okay, Linda.
So I have a couple of things to discuss this evening, and since Ray isn't here, I'll use his space momentarily and, uh, share this with you in just a moment. Um, first of all, I'd like to just recognize all of the effort that Dylan has provided to us this, this month with the airport. Specifically, the grant money that was announced, that's, that's coming to M Sina if we can do the commercial. And um, this serves two purposes, it brings more people into M Sina to enjoy, you know, the recreation, the businesses, all of that, but it also helps Boutique Air and the M Sina Airport. So Dylan, thank you very much, because this is something that he has helped to facilitate. And we have this money, we wanna put it to good use, so that's been a great effort. Uh, the next item that I'd like to mention is the consolidated funding application process, and I referenced that in the, uh, report that I provided to the board. Um, I've heard from several different state agencies that in fact, this is going to be opening probably in May of this year, if not May, then June. We typically have a sixty day window, which looks like a lot of time on paper, but when you start that process, it really starts to dwindle down. So I'm mentioning it now because there may be projects that we could work on from the, the tourism perspective, environmental facilities corporation for water. There'll be a number of opportunities to think about and apply for. So I, I just want everyone to be on, on board with that, and if there are ideas that you'd like to bring forward, please reach out to me. And I'd be happy to, you know, start that process. So now, what we have is, uh, Don mentioned the sports shows and the welcome bags that we, we give to people. So, uh, this wouldn't be, this effort would not be possible without the numbers of folks who provide materials to us. So this, this bag was made possible through the New York Power Authority. Uh, we have chores that were made possible from Dave Swanson, former bank president at North Country Savings Bank, as part of his business up north and wide. We use, uh, New York materials because, uh, New York has provided us with grant money. Uh, let's see, we have one from Jason brochure that he's created, we have several brochures that we have, we've had in our stockpile as well as a postcard. Uh, business cards, a map of M Sina, Robert Moses State Park camping, Discover Trails from the St. Lawrence County Chamber. This is one of the things that people are really eager to get, which is a free cookbook. None of these items, by the way, are, contain any type of price tag on it, they're all free and provided to visitors to the booth. Uh, cookbook provided through W P B S. Uh, let's see, Visitors Guide, Waterfall Guide, and the Discover Guide, and an Angler Guide from the St. Lawrence County Chamber. And they really have helped us this year with more materials so that we could, uh, we could represent not only M Sina, but the North Country. So I reference all of this because lest you think this is us standing in the, you know, the aisle as people go by and just giving out bags, that isn't what happens. What happens at the sports show is we have a television about this size, we have a booth set up. You know, Jason designed that tent that we use, that bright yellow tent. Tables with table drapes, we're not seated during the show, we're engaging with every person that comes into the booth. And sometimes there are so many people that both Don and I are talking to folks. And then I have to sort of watch out of the corner of my eye because there might be somebody who's looking for something, wanna make sure they get it. So if they come in and they show interest in the videos, if they come in and they ask questions, they come in and they start perusing what's on our table of brochures, then we engage them, we try to ask them what they're looking for. We, if, if I see somebody who's wandering around with a whole armload of stuff and they don't have a bag, that's my opening to, could I give you a bag? And maybe you'd like one of these things, and we'd love you to come to M Sina because we have so much to see and do. And they're, they're enamored with the things that they see, they're enamored with the videos, they're enamored with all of the message. So this is something that really promotes the community and all that it has to offer. So we're really so very glad to come home without materials. And this last show, we actually exhausted everything we had brought to the show. So all we had left were business cards to give folks and urge them to, to explore M Sina and come to M Sina. So, does anyone have any questions?
Local people, like local businesses and hotels, hotels giving material to also? I mean, how's that word?
Sometimes, sometimes they do, um, we, we've exhausted just about everything that we had.
But you're open to, you're open to them, right? Like the restaurant or business wants to have, what's the material they wanna give you?
Or, or menus, like in the case, maybe, uh, uh, the new, uh, Brisk Mill on the, on the river or Spankies. I mean, any of these places, if they have something that they'd like to give us, we'd be more than welcome, or anxious, rather, to give them to folks. Let them know that, you know, if you come to M Sina, these are the types of businesses and the types of things you'll see. And of course, the worst don't hurt either, so.
Okay, thank you very much, very loved. All right, very good. As there's no other old business, are there any, anybody public comments?
I have a couple of questions. Dylan, on the, um, Springfield, I assume they need some kind of an I D?
Uh, yes, we'll just need through residency, we have a printed book of every town resident, their address, name, that we will be able to check them to. So anything that has their name and address on it that we can check, gets our files. Yeah, utility bill, driver's license, anything like that.
The other question I had is, does the town make a recommendation to the state of what miles per hour you want on, on to the bridge over, how does that work?
Well, it's fifty five right now, I think we're looking at forty five if we can get that. Again, uh.
That would be the entire, entire pond.
Well, from that one section, I'm thinking of one section out.
It, it would be the entire pond from the bridge over.
Where does that exactly start, right from the water?
Uh, right from, uh, the Owl Street intersection.
Okay.
Up, up to one thirty one.
Okay, okay. Do you have a question? Anybody else have a question, please? Jeff? Gina, make sure you put down any comments. We had comments before also, so you have to say exactly what they are and mention them, okay? All right, we're trying to follow open government, coalition, advice, because they, they do look at what we have for minutes, et cetera, so we're gonna try to improve upon that. Um, if there are no other comments, please, we'd like a motion to go into executive session. For the reasoning of discussions related to proposed pending or current litigation, medical, financial, credit, or employment history, particularly person or corporation, related to appointment, promotion, demotion, discipline, renewal, and acquisition, lease, or sale of real property or securities which would lose to a substantially effective property. So we need a motion for executive session?
A motion.
Hey, Christie, in a second.
I'll start now.
Adrian, on favor. Okay, and it is five eighteen.